Good evening. This is the Barrington Zoning Board of Adjustment. I'm going to make a public announcement first. As Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing the Microsoft team for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through the dialing the following number: 1-603-664-0240 and Conference ID 332788257. Or call 603-664-0330 or email jhuckins@barrington.nh.gov Today is Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, at 7:00, a little bit after 7:00 PM. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. And the members of the Boards that are present are Karen Forbes as Chair. Do you want to announce your names?
Ray Demeris.
Cheryl Hawkins.
George Bailey.
Mary? You're on mute.
I know. I don't know why. Mary Schmals.
Okay. Yep, George is sitting as an alternate member because Don Hatch is not here. So the first item we're going to do is we're going to recall a continued case, which was an appeal by Richard Kelsey. It is, it's not the right one, but 261-39-gr-20-zba appeal. I just want to go over, this hearing, we had this hearing on April 15th, and I just want to go over just to clarify what the additional documents we've had since then. I think Mr. Jeffrey has submitted a letter dated May 6, 2020, and another letter dated May 19, 2020. John, is there anything else in addition to that?
To what? I'm trying to get the other one up.
Yeah.
It's not. Yeah, here we go.
Okay. I think it's just those two additional letters unless there's something else.
The two letters were there, and then I forwarded, oh, let me see, am I on? Yeah, I sent it. There are two letters, and those letters also were forwarded to the attorney, and she responded back, and all the Board members got that, but the rest of the public doesn't see that.
Yeah, that's a term-of-apply privilege.
Yeah.
So, but the only two additional letters we have are the May 6, 2020, and the May 19, 2020. Mr. Kelsey, Mr. Jeffrey, Stephen Jeffrey's letters. Do you want to address anything in particular in your letters? And we will allow Mr. Kelsey to respond afterwards.
You're asking me?
Yeah, just in the two letters, the two additional letters that you sent.
Basically, the town has not voted to allow building permits to be issued on islands that are served only by boats. And the town, in order to issue building permits, they have to comply with all applicable town and state codes and regulations. So until the town does vote, the town is prohibited from issuing building permits on islands. That's basically it. And there's no provisions in 67441 for grandfathering, or vandalism, or same footprint, or seasonal dwellings, or remodeling, or anything else. It basically says you cannot, you're prohibited from issuing a building permit.
Okay. Mr. Kelsey, do you want to respond to anything else in those two letters?
Uh, no.
Okay. I'm just pulling up the law right now. Is there anybody else in the public that wants to speak about the two letters? The two additional letters? Hearing that, we will close. The public portion of the meeting and the Board will continue its discussion.
John, can you bring up 67441, too, that we're discussing?
I gotta Google and look it up. Just a minute.
John, this is Connor. If you minimize that and open a web browser, and you can just use that web browser that's already open if you minimize your folder here. Yep, right there. And just a web search for RSA.
674, colon, 41.
Thank you.
Roman numeral two.
I mean, based on the legal that we got and my interpretation of that, I don't agree with Mr. Jeffrey's. I think it is a zoning board call on this. So, I mean, I think there are two venues that, based on 674, the two ways that the town can do with this, either going through the zoning board, or the town would vote and add something to the zoning ordinance. So I do believe we are in 674, and it is up to this Board to decide.
I would agree, and I think the issue is we have to decide whether or not the application complies with two, Roman numeral two of those conditions, and then we can impose the conditions that we want to impose on the property.
That's correct.
So, anybody want to discuss any part of it? I know we discussed it before. We discussed it a month ago.
The only other item I would like to bring to the Chair's attention under 674 would be to go to Roman numeral 2A. Municipalities may erect any lot, including island lots for islands. It states right there that we have the authority, so I just want to just re-verify that by, because Ray had spoken of Item 2, and I'm looking at Item 2A on page 423 of the Handbook for 2016-17. So it states that we have that authority, Madam Chair.
Right. Our legislative body would have that authority, the town. But they haven't accepted it, so we're still in, we're still in two.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
It's still up to us, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So we can approve this based on any contingencies we want to apply to that. Being a rustic cabin is keeping it a rustic cabin, as is. I think there were some improvements discussed about a composting toilet. I would agree that that's a reasonable. But adding power, water, or anything like that, I would say no, myself.
I would agree. I think that it should stay as it currently is, which is without the improvements then, no insulation either, no electricity, no sewer or water. They can use another sanitary sewage disposal, but, and then I think we should record this decision in the Registry of Deeds. Any comments, anybody?
I agree.
I covered everything that I would add, Chair.
Yep.
I'm in agreement.
So let's just walk through a little bit through two. So the enforcement of the provisions of this section would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. Basically, you've had a cabin on that property for years. I think it would be an extra hardship if they're forced to let it decay and rot. Tell me if anybody disagrees. When the circumstances of the case do not require the building structure or part thereof to be related to existing or proposed streets. So there's no proposed street that it needs to be, because it's on an island. The applicant for such permit may appeal from the decision, oh, that's the rest. That's just the two standards for it.
Madam Chair, did you, in your discussion, did you talk about electrical power?
Well, yes, we did talk about electrical power and not having any, and I think, how's the, I know that Ray had said that he did not want any electricity. I don't want electricity. I don't want insulation in there. I just don't think that's reasonable. I think it's on an island. I think there's certain restrictions to having a cabin on an island.
I agree. No, I was just asking that for my own, because I must have had my ears turned off when that came around, so, thank you.
Yeah, excuse me. This is Richard Kelsey. I have a question about that.
Mr. Kelsey, let me explain to you. First of all, we're not in the public's portion of the meeting.
Okay, I was, okay, I just wanted, I wanted a clarification, but I can get that later. Thank you.
The Board is deliberating, and we're discussing what conditions we've been putting on, on any approval.
That's fine.
Okay.
The only thing I would add is, I agree, no power, none of that, but unless it's a safety issue. I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now, but if it was unsafe for him to be out there without communication of some kind or power, then I would allow it. But aside from that, no.
There's cell phones nowadays.
Right. That's true. How do you charge it?
Oh, you know.
Solar power.
Yeah.
It's a rustic cabin. It should say a rustic cabin. That doesn't mean power.
I'm sorry. The rest of the standard is granting the building permit will not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan, nor will it cause hardship to future purchases or undue financial impact to the town. I think it's those criteria.
Yes.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion. We grant the special exception with the conditions that only a composting toilet be added, that there be no power, no water, it is purely a hand pump water, no solar panels, no insulation.
All right. So let me take and, make an attempt at crafting the motion, okay?
All right.
The motion may be that we approve the building permit for the reconstruction of walls and the roof of the existing camp, the replacement of the vandalized gas stove, and the installation of solar panels located on the building, and any other work the building inspector deems necessary on the island lot identified in the town's tax records as, and I don't have the map or lot number. Granting the building permit will not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan, nor will it cause hardship to future purchases or undue financial impact to the town. This approval is conditioned upon the following. One, pursuant to Section 5.13 of the Barrington Zoning Ordinance, the applicant must submit a certified plan showing the exact location of all property lines and structures on the lot to ensure compliance with the zoning ordinance. Two, the structure must remain a seasonal camp. No insulation shall be installed, nor shall electricity, sewer, or water be provided to the structure without further approval of this Board. Three, the applicant must provide the sanitary sewage disposal at the property, for example, a composting toilet. Four, this decision shall be recorded at the Stratford County Registry of Deeds. Any other discussions on that motion?
So we discussed electrical, solar panels would be considered electrical, in my opinion.
Well, except for the solar panels.
Can I make another clarification?
Is that, is that motion going to include that the client can put in, I mean, the individual can put up solar panels and have 12-volt energy? 12-volt lights?
Well, it says the installation of solar panels.
Very well.
I'm concerned that's a slippery slope, but, I mean, you're adding, solar panels are electricity.
Solar panels requested? I'm confused.
I don't know. I would say no.
John, is there a question for solar panels?
Mr. Kelsey, Mr. Kelsey said that was something that he would like to put in a 12-foot, I mean, a 12-volt solar panel for some bolt lights, and it was for something else that was 12-volt. I can't remember what it was. I didn't have the paper in front of me. But there was also that other one about the section in zoning that he's got to do. That was for a lot that was less than an acre. And I did point out to Laura that this lot's more than an acre, and she said that should have been taken out, but it wasn't.
Oh, the plot plan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'm a little concerned about solar panels. I mean, it is electricity, so. So we can add lights, and we can start pumping water and all of that, and that's why, you know, my concern is keeping it rustic. You can use gas lamps and all kinds of things to.
What's the Board's thoughts on that, then?
I agree with Ray. No solar panels.
I agree also.
All right.
With Ray.
Okay, then let me, do you want me to reread the motion? Everybody?
Yep, go for it.
We approve the building permit for the reconstruction of walls and the roof of the existing camp, and the replacement of the vandalized gas stove, and any, and any other work the building inspector deems necessary on the island lot identified in the town's tax records as, and I don't have the map and lot. Granting the building permit will not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan, nor will it cause hardship to future purchases or undue financial impact to the town. This approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the structure must remain a seasonal camp. No insulation shall be installed, nor shall electricity, sewer, or water be provided to the structure without further approval of this Board. Two, the applicant must provide the sanitary sewage disposal at the property, for example, a composting toilet. Three, this decision shall be recorded at the Stratford County Registry of Deeds.
Sounds good.
It's good, yep.
Power for the composting toilet? That's.
Okay. Um, so that's, that's Ray's motion, right?
I second it.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to do a roll-call vote. Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
And Karen Forbes, yes. The motion has passed. I'm going to move on to the next matter. Mr. Kelsey, you had some questions, and you should probably talk to John Hawkins about it. I guess he left. All right. The next case is 239-105-B-20-Variants. The owners are Kelsey and Leonard Fowler. Are the applicants present? Kelsey and Leonard Fowler, are you present? John, have you heard from them?
I'm checking to see who's in the meeting now. Let me get a quick look, because they might be on the phone.
Yeah.
There is a K, although it could be Karen, too. Let's see.
If you're on the phone, dial star six, and that will let you speak.
This is Connor. I see a Jane Kilpatrick and a phone number 781-591-9980.
That's the second, that's the number three. That's the other case.
Yeah, that's, all right. So why don't we move ahead to the Kilpatricks, and then we'll come back to the Fowler's. Okay, so we're going to call case 124-21-gr-20-Barron-ZBA. The owners are Gary and Jane Kilpatrick. Are the applicants present?
Jane Kilpatrick is here. Tobin Fowler is supposed to be here.
Jane, you there?
Jane is here.
Okay, do you want to present your case?
Um, I was told that Tobin was going to be presenting it. It's Tobin Fowler on the call, our engineer. Okay. If he was going to present this, I will take a stab and not.
Do we want to take, we haven't, do you want to give him a call?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you take a break and give him a call? Meanwhile, we'll look for the Fowler's.
Madam Chair, in the effort to save time, I'd like to move on to number four, and I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April 15, 2020.
Okay.
Without exception.
Is there a second?
Wait a minute, though. I had a question on, let me see. A motion was made by Ray Demeris, the second page, up on the top. For case number 261-39-gr-20. Wasn't it, the responses, Hawkins said yes, Bailey said no, Demeris said no, Forbes said yes. Wait a minute.
It was three to two.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I said no. We have to change that, so.
Okay. So Mary said no, and George said no.
And so did Ray.
So it got defeated? It was granted. Motion was made by C. Hawkins and seconded by Demeris to grant the variance.
Okay, never mind. Sorry.
Well, there's, there's another one, the Kelsey one. Oh, yeah, that was the continuance. That was the continuance.
I think we voted everything yes, other than the continued case.
Yeah.
That's the report I gave in select board.
I think that was the continuance.
I said no on that one. That was the camp one that we were just talking about.
Yeah, that was the.
We continued that. We continued.
Right. So my answer was no, because we had, we didn't have enough people, so it was continued.
That's why you would say yes.
It doesn't matter. Keep going.
Well, we need a second to approve the minutes, then.
I second.
Okay. So, Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
And I, the Chair, vote yes to approve the minutes. We'll give Kilpatrick a couple more minutes.
So we have Jane, we've got a, anybody know who the 781 is? 591-980?
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? This is Gary Kilpatrick.
Okay.
Is that, are you 781-591-980?
I am, yes.
Yes, okay, great.
My wife is trying to call back.
Yep, she's on, yep. Okay.
He didn't answer. Her inquiry.
So do you want to go forward, or what do you want to?
I want to go forward. Yeah, he didn't, he didn't answer, so I'll go forward.
All right. So basically, you need to go through the criteria for a variance?
Okay.
Want to explain what you're proposing to do to start with?
So we have an existing camp on a lot that is on Mendham's Pond, and we are looking to replace that building. Right now, it does not have a foundation. It's on blocks. So we are planning on replacing that with a structure that has a foundation. It will be in pretty much the same footprint, except for one jut out.
So it looks like it's 17.4 feet, right?
From the road?
Yeah, from the road.
So, right.
That's what the existing, the existing camp is, that distance from the road.
So it's not moving any closer to the water. Is it wider? It's wider, right?
It's where, so if you see, I don't know if you can see, the after plan. Let's see, that's the existing, existing house.
Yep.
And then the after is in that same spot, except for that jut out there. So, yep.
Well, it does look like it's wider.
I'm sorry.
There's no dimensions to show us how wide the house is on the lakeside. Go ahead.
The house.
Go ahead with your presentation. Go ahead.
The house is 24 by 34 currently, and we're maintaining exactly that same dimension, except up by the road, the addition of a room, which is, I think, about 10 by 15. And that's, that's the additional room on the plan.
Okay, go ahead with your, you have to, you have to meet the standard, so you need to address the issues.
Okay, where do I start?
You have to explain why you're, you are justified with the variance. So you need to go through and talk about the special conditions. You have to talk about why it's consistent with the spirits. You need to talk about the diminution of the surrounding property, all those things.
Okay, so the things that are on page two, is that right? Special conditions exist.
Or you can expand on them, or you can think different. Yes, you need, you have a burden of proof. You have to establish those in front of us.
Okay, so the first, the first, okay, thank you for putting that on screen. All right. So, let's see, special conditions exist such that little reinforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. Okay, so the lot is grandfathered for the existing, the lot is grandfathered and is too small for a reasonable-sized residence. Yeah, I mean, I think it's like, you know, like, we had a quarter acre, Gary? I think it's something like that.
Yep.
Okay, the variance would allow for a residence in this residential zone. The addition will be further away from the property line than the existing residence of 13.7 feet. The additional part. Granting the variance won't result in diminution of surrounding property values. I think the new residence will be of higher value and will help in property values. Granting of the variance would do substantial justice. So it'll allow us to build a reasonable residence for use. And I don't, it won't be contrary to the public interest.
Does the Board have any? Does the board have any questions?
The, uh, the decks on the water side, what were those involved?
Those have been in over, over 20, 20, 25 years. I forget, my parents used to own the cottage.
It looks like they're new construction on the pictures.
Uh, they've been there for the 25 years that we've owned the place.
Both decks, the upper deck and the lower deck on the water side?
Yep.
Correct.
Any other questions? George, Mary, Cheryl?
The porch you're looking to put on, is that for the front of the building?
The road, the roadside.
Yeah, the roadside, huh?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And what, and why do you want a foundation under it?
Well, I'm hoping that, yeah.
We, we want to use it more than just, uh, seasonally. Right now, it's a seasonal property.
So what you, what you, do you plan on filling it in, making it a three season?
Yeah.
George, I think it's intended to be a year-round home here.
Yeah, it could be, it'd be hopefully a year-round home.
Hope, it, you, do you use it as a three, I mean, a year-round home now?
No, we don't. We won't be using it as a year-round home. We'll, we use it more in the summer.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question. It says the only thing you're looking for is the minimum yard setback or wooden sheets.
Correct. Relative to the road, for the, the little addition off, uh, off the current footprint.
So isn't that the front step back? John?
Yes, it is the front step back. It's the side towards the road.
Yeah, so that, is that 30 feet or 40 feet?
40.
That's 42, okay. And other than that, you just? Oh, so John, you just thought that was, because they were rebuilding the same building, right?
Yeah, right now, there's the existing one, and then when they put a new home up, they want to add this, and that changes this back is what they're looking for.
Alright, so, okay. Alright, is there anybody, any other questions from the board?
No.
Um, is there anybody, um, the public who has any questions? Or have any comments in favor? Is there anybody from the public that is opposed to it and wants to make comments? Hearing none, we will close the public portion of the meeting and the board can discuss it. Any comments from the board?
I think it's fine. I don't see any problem with it.
There are a lot of, a lot of houses on that road that are significantly closer to the road, somewhere almost in the road, so I don't have a problem.
Okay, it is an odd-shaped lot, too.
It is, yes.
So it kind of defined it. George, any comments?
No, I don't, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. I should have said it earlier.
Yeah, Cheryl, anything? Cheryl, are you there? John, I think we lost Cheryl.
Yeah, she's not on the list anymore.
Oh, she's, oh, Cheryl, come here and talk on my computer.
I'm back.
Okay.
He muted me. I didn't, I didn't mute myself. I have no.
Do you do that often?
He wishes he could do that at home. No. He did it with the TV remote one day, but anyway, the, um, the existing building's already closer to the road than the proposed addition to the building, so I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, um, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
Alright, um, Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I, the chair, vote yes. And your request for variance has been granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're gonna, we're gonna go back to the Fowler's. Are the Fowler's on?
I don't see them here.
Maybe they couldn't get on.
Should we continue it to next month if they're not here?
Yeah, motion to continue?
I make a motion, we continue.
Second.
Alright, Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes, yep.
And I vote yes, too. So it's now continued. Do we have any other business? I don't think so, right?
Nope.
Chair, this is Connor. If I may just briefly, John, are you confident that the folks who didn't make it to the meeting had the resources they needed to, to be able to access the meeting? Or do you want to try to call them? It's obviously up to the chair, but I just want to make sure that we've done it enough to make, to get them here.
Uh, we can take a minute.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
What do you think, John?
Do you want me to call them?
Yeah, I'll take a, I'll take a look in the file and give them a call. Hold on just a minute, because the number should be in the file on the application.
And John, we can actually call them from the meeting, so we, the, would they just come right into the meeting if they pick up?
Okay, let me, let me get the files so we get that telephone number.
And I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. I just, I would hate to think that they had trouble getting in because we're doing it this way. But obviously, you know, not, not many other people have had trouble.
The file and applications are all in this basket.
Is the number 767-8007?
I, what are their names?
Kelsey. Kelsey Fowler.
Fowler, okay.
Did you want me to call or is John doing that?
I'm calling from the meeting right now. They may or may not pick up. It'll show up as a Barrington number, as a 664 number, but it'll be an automated message saying, you know, you're coming into the meeting.
Oh, I see, okay.
If they don't pick up, um, we can try calling them direct.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
So they didn't pick up. If you want, I can call them. Would you mind reading me the number again?
767-8007, and there's also an email address here.
Madam Chair, I was able to make contact with Kelsey Fowler, and she said her husband's available to participate in the meeting, um, if you're still willing to consider it.
Yeah, absolutely.
You have to reverse the motion or?
Mr. Fowler, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm gonna now call the Fowler case, um, which is 239-155-B-20-Variants, and Mr. Fowler is on the line. Mr. Fowler, do you want to present your case?
Um, yeah, you want me to do it later? Yeah, hold on. Yeah, my father-in-law is on the phone. He's the one doing, he's a contractor, so I'm gonna let him go ahead and speak.
Yeah, can you just state his name?
Oh, yeah, his name is Mike Drew.
Okay.
Michael Drew. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, hi, um, yeah, we'd like to put a, a six-foot, uh, wide pharmacy porch on the front of the house. And we have, right now, we have enough room to do about a four-and-a-half foot one without a, a variance, so, which is kind of narrow, so we'd like to get that extra foot and a half to, uh, make it six feet wide.
So, um, you have to address the standard for a variance, which is, um, you have that no special conditions exist, but you have to have special conditions of the property. And you, your special conditions could be that the house is already located on the property. It's located in a corner.
Okay, um, well, yeah, the special condition would be the house is already located where it is, and so it's, it's restricting how wide we can do the pharmacy porch in the, the current location of the house.
Okay. Um, you have to address granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. It will not result in diminution of surrounding property values, substantial justice, all those, those four, those other four criteria.
Okay, um, if anything, I think would increase the value of the properties around us, it would, uh, increase the value of their house, which should bring up the value of anyone else's, uh, and neighbors.
So let's, okay, so talk about the plan that you have. The plan that you have does not have the distance from the porch to the Malick Road marked.
Um, I, I did mark that. It's like, uh, right now, it's like 44 feet, nine inches to the front of the house from the road.
Yeah, yeah, so we need, we need the distance from the porch to the road, and we need the surveyor to note it on the plan, on your, uh, drawing location plan.
It should be on there. I marked, I marked it on the plan.
No, no, it has to show from the porch. We, so let me explain something to you. What happens with the ZBA is that people in the past have said one thing, and if we don't have a plan in the file, sometimes those things move. So we require that anybody that comes in front of us have a site plan that's stamped by a surveyor that says where the improvements are going to be on the lot. Is there anything, um, board members, George, I know you're particular about, so, the, um, the well, the leach field have to be marked on there.
That, we normally do require those items, yes, but, uh, as you stated, the, the porch is not listed, the distance from the edge of the porch to the road is not there. They only have the existing, uh, on, uh, one of the other pages. They took a page out of the map and used the, uh, off the drawing, and they just, they haven't, they haven't got it complete, so. And Barbara should have noticed that and made note of the fact that they didn't have it on the list, so.
Yeah, they were out of step because I, I hired a surveyor to serve, there was nothing on the property. There's nothing on file, so I hired a surveyor. And, uh, he just marked it where the existing house is, and I marked that I was coming off the existing house six feet.
It, it doesn't matter. It's, it's, we need to have it on the plan so that when the building inspector goes out there, he's got something that's marked by a surveyor, and he can show that it is where it's supposed to be. So what we normally do is grant people a continuance for a month in order to get that, um, put on there.
And Madam Chair, he's gonna need relief from the side and the front on this, on that corner of the porch. I don't know.
He has enough on the side. He meets those codes for, uh, 30 feet.
It, it looks like the porch is getting closer to the side setback than 39, 38.9 that you have on the map. So that is going to change. That number will change because the house is at an angle, so that number is going to change. It's going to be less than 38.9. And you're also going to be closer to the road, so that number needs to be in there as well.
Alright, but he only needs, I mean, that's eight feet, eight and a half feet, so, I mean, that's.
We need to mark it and sign it, so.
Yeah, so the surveyor, the surveyor has any questions? He should call John or the building department to find out, or the ZBA department, planning department, to find out.
Okay, so he needs the existing, what he just did, pretend to just draw the porch on it with the measurements, so, okay.
With the setback, yeah.
The surveyor has to do that work for you.
The surveyor has to do that? Okay. Alright.
Is there anything else from any of the board? Yeah, does the board have any other questions, any other issues, so that we could address it all at once?
I did, I did go to the, the two measurements, it's side and, and with the, with the case, I didn't see what the application, was it for both front and side setback was the application?
The side would, the side wouldn't necessarily kick in, because you, it's 25 from the side.
30 feet, that's right, that's right.
20 or 30 or, yeah, but it's not, it's not the 50, so.
Correct, yeah. So, okay, no, so need a motion?
Alright, I think you mentioned, no, you mentioned a septic. The septic is, the state just approved a new septic system because they're having issues with it, so do you just want a copy of what we've got for that?
Uh, we normally just have the, have the surveyor mark where the septic system is and where the well is.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
On the same plan, yeah.
On the same plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have to do that then.
Okay, so it's going to be continued. Um, what's the date for the next meeting? We have to tell them.
The 18th would be the third Wednesday.
Uh, 17th.
17th.
17th, right.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue it?
Alright, I'll.
Uh, Mary's the second. Um, Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
George?
Yes, please.
And me, yes. Okay, Mr. Drew, you all set?
Yep, yep, all set. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So we've already approved the minutes.
Motion, Madam Chair?
Second.
Okay, so.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Yes, thank you.
Cheryl?
Yes, who seconded that?
Uh, George, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, and George?
Yes.
Okay. I do, too. I vote yes.
You better.